June eighth meeting of the Nantucket Planning Board. We are conducting this meeting by Zoom webinar, remote participation pursuant to Governor Baker, March twelfth, two thousand twenty order regarding open meeting law. Board members, please acknowledge your presence when I call your name. Barry Rector.
Yeah.
Joe Topham.
Yeah.
Dave Iverson.
Yeah.
And just in case I don't see him yet. Nat Lowell. He'll we'll make an announcement when he joins in and the chair, myself, John Trudell. Alternates, I'll need a little help. Carl Borcher.
Yeah.
Abby Di Molina. No, Stephen Welch. Okay, Meg, if they join in again, please let us know that they're signing on. Staff, Leslie Snell, assistant or actually acting or soon to be acting planning director.
She's at she's having some tech trouble, but she's working on it and will be with us shortly.
Okay, and presently, Meg Trudell, managing specialist.
Here.
And Catherine Nansero, administration specialist. Okay, when she joins in. Great, with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would entertain motion for approval of the agenda.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion's been made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Roll call, Barry.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
The chair votes aye. Now, onto the agenda, we're going to first start with the discussion with short term rental work group for potential warrant articles, ideas and short term rentals for the two thousand twenty-three town meeting. As with items in the past, anything to do with short term rental for reasons of my professional link in real estate and also the under the advice of the Attorney General and various attorneys for real estate, I am going to be consistent in recusing myself. And with that, I would like to hand this meeting for the discussion over to the Vice Chair, Dave Iverson. And after the discussion, I will be tuning in separately, but I won't be saying anything. And then when the discussion is over, I would ask that Dave or Meg acknowledges that the meeting's over and allows me to come back in to run the meeting. And then we'll go through the rest of the planning board meetings. So with that, Dave, if you're ready, I will hand that over to you.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
No, that's okay, Stephen Welch is here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Stephen.
Hey, welcome. Actually, through Mr. Chair, I'm recusing for the same reasons Realtor and I'll tune in on YouTube and sign back in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Dave. We'll see you in a few or however.
Awesome. So not sure how to start here, maybe with Stacy giving a quick introduction to the rest of the planning board probably would be the best, best way to get the ball rolling.
Great, thanks. Hi, everyone. So let's see, I have a slide that has the short term work groups. Short term, sorry, rentals work group. If that's okay for me to share, here's just, these are all of our members. Our primary members, we have three at large members, John, Jim and Karen and an alternate. Jonathan, and then we have Dave as our planning board member with Barry as the alternate. Finance Committee, Peter Schaefer, with Joe Grous as the alternate. Advisory Committee and non-voting taxpayers, Peter Kahn with William Gardner as the alternate. We have a primary and an alternate from Act Now, Julia and Carl, Nantucket Together, primary and alternate Kathy and Robin, and then Tom Dixon is our affordable housing advocate. Member, we had a designee non-voting from the Board of Health, Mary Lepore, but she resigned from the committee last month. So that's an overview of the committee. My proposal, David, is to just give an overview of, I can sort of skip over these things of the purposes of the bylaw and the bylaw components that the committee is currently thinking of and then open for discussion with the planning board, if that makes sense to you.
That sounds perfect, Stacy.
Okay. And I think you all saw the draft, updated draft document that was that's dated as of yesterday, which is based on the the group's last conversation. So here's the purposes and and I just want to make clear that this has not been voted on or approved by the committee. This is really a work in progress. Some of these components have more support than others, but the group was comfortable sharing this as where this is sort of where it is in its deliberations at the moment. But it does not represent the consensus of the group, nor is it a final product in any way, shape or form. So these are the purposes that the group has been identifying as the core like objectives that it is really trying to meet with its bylaw. And so the first one is really, you know, the the group wants to protect the traditional use of homes for as short term rentals as it has been through the ages on Nantucket for both short.
Yeah, small, um, small diet.
Sorry. There there's there's some cross talk happening.
There we go. We're good.
Okay, thanks. So, you know, the the group acknowledges that short term rentals have long been a way of life on Nantucket for both year round and seasonal residence. And they really want to protect that for people, both for current residents and future residents to be able to live on Nantucket and be able to provide housing for for tourists on Nantucket. There is an interest in avoiding any dramatic adverse impacts on the local economy that might result from a dramatic change in short term rental revenue or short term rental taxes and visitor visitation spending. At the same time, the group was really interested in prohibiting additional corporate ownership of residential properties or really business ownership where the purpose would be exclusively using homes as short term rentals rather than as housing for full time or short or part time residence and also limiting the conversion of residential units that would currently be available for year round, particularly year round rental housing. They wanted to really limit the conversion of that potential housing to short term rentals. And lastly, the group really wanted to provide a regulatory structure that would reduce the threat of litigation of people who are using their homes as short term rentals in the manners described earlier by full and part time residents. So those are the goals that they are trying to meet in their in their regulations. So here is in a nutshell, the 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 proposals that they are currently looking into and exploring. So these, so they they have divided this up, there's sort of three pieces. The first is a set of general bylaws that they envision would be offered as one package to town meeting and that it's clarified that this only would take effect if the zoning bylaw passes. So the 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 system that the group is envisioning is that there would be a a zoning bylaw that would address the 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 use and the general bylaw that would address the operation. And so the regulation of the you the the operation of short term rentals would take place in a general bylaw. But that general bylaw would only be applicable if the zoning bylaw passes and vice versa. So the general bylaw provisions that they are exploring include the following. First, that an an owner would only be able to operate one dwelling unit as a short term rental. So they would only be able to get a certificate for short term renting for one dwelling unit per owner. That dwelling units owned by corporations would not be eligible to receive certificates of registration. And so that every shareholder partner or a member of a trust, an LLC, an S corporation or other legal vehicles would need to be a natural person. And that this would need to be proven when they apply to get the certificate of registration. That short term rentals would not be allowed in units that are deed restricted for affordable or attainable housing. That short term rental in apartment buildings, multifamily dwelling units and townhouses would be limited to four weeks per year. That short term rental units would be limited to occupancy change of only nine times during the months of July and August. That any property that is sold after this bylaw, the the limit of occupancy change would be four times during July and August. Those with existing short term rental certificates would be allowed to continue to engage in short term rentals until the unit is transferred, conveyed or not renewed. So this is sort of a a method of grandfathering in people who owners who are currently corporations, owners who operate multiple short term rentals. So those first two bullets in particular, as well as the apartment buildings, multifamily dwellings and townhouses, all of those would be ground grandfathered until they were the unit was sold or that it was not conveyed. This language is meant to exempt changes in in ownership that would go through inheritance. So that grandfathering would continue for those that are conveyed or that are that the ownership has changed only via inheritance. And also, the group expects that the nine time change of occupancy limit will apply to everyone. So that is not meant to be grandfathered. So that would be applying to everyone. And that hosted stays would be exempted from most of these provisions. The the group is also looking at providing hardship waivers through the Board of Health and inviting the Board of Health to create guidelines, regulations on how they would attest to hardship. And the group wants that to specifically refer to the the goals that I went through earlier, the purpose and intent of this, of this bylaw. So that's the general bylaw provisions. And then the zoning bylaw provision, which, as I mentioned, would only take effect if the general bylaw passes, would add a definition of short term rentals to the zoning bylaws for the town. And this is the same definition of short term rentals that passed in in two thousand twenty-two in the Board of Health bylaw that that we would the general bylaw that is being updated in our in our model. And then it would amend the use chart to allow short term rentals as a permissible use in all districts. The group is also as a sort of a third category proposing some standalone sort of à la carte policies that would be allowed to take effect whether or not the additional, the 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 general bylaw and the zoning bylaw that they are proposing come together. And that is to propose the three percent community impact fee that the Commonwealth allows on properties that are not the owner's primary residence if owners have more than two or two or more short term rentals. And by law, that would require at least thirty-five percent of that fee to go toward affordable housing or local infrastructure. But the group is also proposing as a separate vote, because it's a two thirds vote that a hundred percent of that fee could be dedicated to affordable housing or local infrastructure projects. Dave, was there something you wanted to ask or add there? Dave, you're muted.
No, you did a great job, Stacy. Thank you. But what I'd like to do before we turn it over to the planning board is just to check with the short term work group. If anyone thinks that Stacy missed anything that should be considered here, please raise your hand. Kathy.
Hi, Dave. I just I just wanted to make sure that what I was reading was what was what Stacy was saying. So I just had a couple a couple of questions if I could. So I didn't see where the the limit of nine says it wasn't part of the grandfathering. I'm not sure where the language was to say that. So she stated that, but I just didn't see it in the in the presentation. And also, I was unclear on the the conveyance and transfer, maintaining the ability to have that. You continue to operate your STRs for inheritance purpose or transferring to another family member. I didn't read that that's what that said on the bullet. So that's just.
Yeah.
Saying that.
Okay, no, those are two good points. I I think that what and I think maybe that should be the first thing on that slide of Stacy's is that everybody that is engaged in short term rentals with a with a permit through the state currently will be grandfathered in a bylaw, not in a zoning, in a zoning way. So that that's an important point of what we're working on. And then we haven't, I think that we don't have the details of the of what we call the legacy families or the pass-throughs. So that's probably why it's not in there. And I think that that we're going to be trying to work that out with John Giorgio, what the best way, if that's the path we go to to do that. And there's been some suggestions to use waivers that the Land Bank uses, but we haven't gotten that far down the road on that item. So I think that it's best said that we're working on the details.
Yeah, and just to clarify, Kathy, so this here in in L in the version that just got sent out yesterday, it says that the this is sort of the grandfathering clause, which is L. It does say except for subsection K. So subsection K is the nine times during July and August.
So thank you. I saw that in there and I was just curious as it wasn't, it wasn't in the writing on the presentation.
Oh, yeah, I just I just said it verbally. Sorry.
Thanks.
Good. All right. So so we're all we're all good now. I'd like to open up to the planning board for any questions, comments, suggestions.
Dave, can I say something before you go ahead? Sorry.
Yes, Julia, of course.
Thank you. I guess I'm curious, though, like, so this is a general bylaw. Most of it is, as I read it, falls under under the authority of the Board of Health, right? So it would not, you know, none of this work would fall under the authority of the planning board. Am I correct in assuming that?
Well.
That's how I read it, right?
Yeah, no, I get it. And I think that that as of now, it's it's the regular, the registration and the nuisances part. And and I guess that's something we're going to have to work out. As for, we have Granicus that's supposed to be in place for some enforcement. And it's the, I think, probably the hardship piece, if we decide that that's going to be part of these bylaws, we need to figure out who deals with that. And that might be better placed with the zoning board than with health. But that's just my thought. And I think that I would look to the to the rest of the planning board or staff to.
And yeah, I'm happy. I don't want to, you know, into like, sort of, I'm happy to let the planning board speak. I just had a couple, like, that was my first question was sort of like.
Okay.
You know, is this going to fall under the Board of Health? Because if that is the fact that is, that is in fact how it's going to go, I was sort of curious why this wasn't like a joint planning board, Board of Health, for example. So that, you know, if they think certain things are going to be hard to enforce or or easier to enforce or whatnot, they could give us some guidance and, you know, at least Roberto, who seems to be on the call, I think.
No, I think that's.
Been working with Granicus in that respect.
That's a very, very valid point. And without Mary, we don't really have their point of view. So I I would suggest, and maybe Stacy could work that out, is to is to invite Roberto to a meeting to 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 talk this through with him. Hey, Roberto. Let's 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 get to the planning board portion here and then.
Just sort of, sorry, one more quick question. This is directly for the planning board before letting before, because I am looking for some clarity. So at the at our last short term rental work group meeting, I raised the issue that I was wondering why we did not look at any other alternative than a big yes for, you know, full time short term rentals in all districts and using the bylaws, which can be flipped around with a fifty-one percent vote at town meeting. And the answer that I got from our, at least what I interpreted from Judy Barrett, was that the town's position was that short term rentals are currently a legal residential use. And that somehow that was sort of the reason that we were sort of barreling to, you know, forward with this type of zoning article as opposed to looking at alternatives like accessory use. And you know that, you know, Act Now and others have brought forward accessory use articles. It would be great to have a conversation at the planning board level where, you know, it's not just we're assuming a full codification, but we can look at other options and regulate some of this through zoning, not all of it. I understand the licensing and, you know, a lot of nuisance stuff is great through the general bylaw. But given that there could be a lot of flip flopping going forward, there's a lot more strength in in the zoning. So I wanted to bring that up in case the planning board wants to discuss.
Perfect, Julia. Thank you. So I would turn it over to anyone on the planning board that has comments, suggestions. And again, not just what what we've shared with you with our draft policies, but as what Julia suggested as it goes, as far as it goes to how we codify them through the zoning bylaws. So any planning board member have any input? I can't see everyone's hand. So let let me know.
I don't see any hands.
I'm not seeing any hands either.
Wow, guys, come on.
Here's a hand. Barry has his hand up.
Thank you.
Hey, Barry.
Hi, through you, Mr. Chairman. I I'd probably like to engage Judy as well as Town Council, who I see is on as well. I I believe both of them have strongly advised that in order to accomplish this task, that it be placed as a general bylaw, which actually gives it a lot more power and substance than would be trying to put it through as a zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw can get somewhat convoluted at times and may not address all issues. Unfortunately, there has to be a zoning component, just just even in terms of getting general descriptions about what what an STR is, what what a dwelling is. Those things do need to take place, but I I think I'd like to hear from both Judy Barrett and and our own Town Council. I thought I saw John on here somewhere. Oh, there he is. Yeah. So I think maybe they are the best ones to be able to address that. And and you certainly can tell me if I'm if I'm a hundred percent off base as well. But please, thank you.
So it it was our recommendation that the that the work group look at a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw in order to, what I would say, make it clear that the short term rental use isn't allowed residential use. And that will obviously move the current pending lawsuits of which, right now, there are three. But at the same time, we would tie that zoning bylaw use regulation, if you will, to a general bylaw that that regulates the operation of short term rentals. You know, if you do everything in zoning, you're going to have a strict, a strict application of grandfathering for all uses that are that are pre-existing, non-conforming. And the thought was that it would be better to do a targeted approach through a general bylaw where there where you don't have to deal with the grandfathering unless you tailor it specifically to your needs. And that's what's happened here in this general bylaw and specifically its subsection L. We we understand, obviously, that going forward, an amendment to the general bylaw will only require a majority vote. But whereas amendment to a zoning bylaw would generally have to be a two thirds vote. And I don't think we saw that as a anything other than allowing the majority of town meeting members to to decide if in the future they want to amend the general bylaw as opposed to the two thirds vote of town meeting. I don't know if Judy has anything else to ask, but that was the approach that we recommended. And again, both the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw would have to pass and substantially the form presented in the warrant for any of this to take effect.
Thank you, John. Judy?
Yeah, Barry, thank you for the question. I mean, I I I've told the working group, I struggled with this myself. And where I arrived at peace with the the idea of just allow saying it's an allowed use as a right. Because we're tying the whole thing to conformance with the general bylaw. So you only get to be that allowed use if you are in conformance with the general bylaw. It's like any other use that that is also subject to some other regulatory scheme. You have to comply with both. So I reached a piece with this and I I I don't exactly agree with Julia's characterization of it as being barreling forward because a lot of thought went into this. And I, you know, I kept looking at the table of uses and thinking, well, there are districts where you only allow dwellings as an accessory as an accessory use, such as in a commercial district. Should we parrot that what the zoning scheme is? And I know because I've worked in Nantucket for a long time that you have, you have dwelling units in your commercial districts and they're maybe non-conforming or not, but if they're being used for short term rental in conformance with the general bylaw, that's okay. And that's that's what the proposal is. And I think we would probably welcome some, you know, direction or pushback from the planning board if the planning board's not comfortable with that. But I I reached peace with it. It makes sense to me because the whole sort of zoning right is contingent on conformance with that general bylaw. And it is certainly true that changing a general bylaw is an easier task at town meeting than zoning. We all know that. But that's town meetings purview. I mean, I hate to be, I'm not trying to be light about this, but one town meeting doesn't tie the hands of another town meeting. And that's true with zoning. It's true with the general bylaw. The fact that the quantum of vote is different. It's still up to town meeting. That's the form of government Nantucket has. That's what you're dealing with.
And Judy, I would I would also add, if I may, Barry, that the trend is to make it easier to amend zoning bylaws, for example, under the Housing Choice Law, which is only a majority vote. And so if you have, if you want to be nimble.
Hi, I'm checking in.
If you want to be able to react to. If you wanna be able to react to the changing circumstances, you know, I, I don't. I, I think a majority vote is the right way to go here. That's my opinion.
If I could ask Judy and John something real quick, unless you're still going, Barry. You're, you're muted, Barry.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. I, I do wanna circle back and then, please.
So the last STR meeting, I, I think we all heard you loud and clear about keeping it as simple and straightforward as possible. Um, if we were to tinker with how we place this in. The use chart, right? By saying it's, it's legal by accessory here. Or not legal by accessory there. Uh, what is the grandfathering insanity implications of that, right? Won't it make things just even crazier than just simply saying something is, is grandfathered? Things would be grandfathered in some districts, not in others. Am I right in assuming that's how that would work if, if we were. Doing more of a bits and pieces approach in zoning? And, and either John or, or Judy could. Chime in on that.
I would, I would agree with that characterization. Yes.
Okay.
And it, as I said. I think it's better to do a very tailored or targeted grandfathering. Provision in the general bylaw, which you can certainly do. But take it out of zoning, the use is allowed. And you know, if you're gonna start talking about accessory. Uses, then you're still gonna have issues about, well, what is accessory? Uh, how, you know, what is the length of time it's used as a short-term rental? Um, and is it truly accessory? Because that, the dominant use at that point would be. Residential and not short-term rental. So. I think the thought here was, uh, put a yes in, in, in every district, but regulated through a general bylaw with targeted. Um, ability. To, um. Uh, grandfather certain things and not grandfather other things. So for example. The nine-time change of occupancy and the four-time change of occupancy is not, is specifically. Accepted. From the general bylaw. Uh, grandfathering provision.
Okay, um, I. I don't know who had their hand up first. Was it Barry or, or Peter? I saw Barry up first. Barry?
Um, I do want you to, actually, let me, let me take the moment here. Call to, who is now going to be the director of planning. You know, again, congratulations to her, but I'd just like her to confirm. Everything we've discussed right at this moment and maybe chime in just a bit further. So that we have that perspective. Kind of locked down and in place. Thank you.
All right, Leslie?
All right. Thanks, uh, thanks Barry. I'm not exactly sure what you're looking for, but. Um, I do think, you know, allowing it as a use in all zoning districts makes it very clear. And regulating it through the general bylaw, which as George, or excuse me, John Giorgio already said. Um, I've called him George twice in, in two meetings in a row, sorry. Uh, regulating it through the general bylaw is a lot more flexible. Um, enforcement for the zoning bylaw is very difficult and time-consuming. So if people are concerned about enforcement. Uh, the general bylaw, uh, makes that much clearer and a much easier process.
And Leslie, on that point, I would add that we. Went to great lengths in chapter one twenty-three to have expansive. Enforcement provisions, including a civil penalty of up to five thousand dollars for a violation, something you would not have. If you put these regulations into zoning. So that's another reason why I think it, it's better to be in the general bylaw.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Leslie. Peter Khan?
Uh, thank you, Dave. I just wanted to bring something to the attention of the planning commission that I think. Um, may have been inadvertently passed over by Stacy down intentionally, but. In discussing paragraph K, which is the. Uh, section that distinguishes between the four and the nine, uh, rental opportunities. Um, I don't think it was pointed out that the distinction is being made here that. Um, the, the, the difference is based solely on whether or not, um. It is a resident or non-resident. And. Yes, after, after sale, that's, that's the way, that's the way.
No, I think you're, I, I mean, but it has to sell for that trip.
Yes, I understand that, but the point is, okay. The point being though, that the, the planning commission should be aware that this, the. Uh, this is a very controversial, I think, within the group, as evidenced by a lot of email traffic in the last couple of days. But also, um, there has been, at least at the outset and throughout our meetings, a, an understanding. That one of our basic principles, in fact, a purposes and intents, was that everyone be treated. Uh, the same, um, uh, uh, but whether seasonal or, or, or not. And in large part, um, there are a variety of reasons for this, not the least of which. Uh, is the threat of, of litigation. Uh, and the fact that in, in various short-term rental, uh, litigation around the country. Um, when, when property owners are treated differently, particularly where there is an economic. A benefited issue. And in this case, obviously, the difference between four and nine rental opportunities ultimately will be, will be a. A, a, a monetary difference. Uh, those, those, um, uh, those cases have, uh. Have, uh, have often been determined to be unconstitutional. So, um. The point being here, I think that the, um, uh, this is one provision, uh, that I think, uh, has, you know, uh. Came up, uh, suddenly, I, I arguably at the last meeting, for some of us who were not able to be on the call or at least be heard on the call. Uh, this is a, a, a one that needs a lot more discussion.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Um, before I go to either Nat or Joe, I wanna give, um, any planning board member an opportunity to. To respond to Peter and, and or Judy or, or attorney Giorgio about the legality of it. Nobody wants to say a thing. So I. I, I would like to just. Point out that, that the reason for this is to address. The attainability of housing on Nantucket for people that live there year-round. And, and that is really, in, in my opinion, and, and, and anyone in the STR work group can, can tell me I'm wrong, but my opinion is. Is this, this was put in specifically to allow. A year-round resident that is buying a new house to help afford their house. Um, a little easier. Um. To say that we, that we treat every. Person the same on Nantucket, it, it just isn't true. We have, we have, um. We, we have carve-outs for, for property tax. We have deals on the boat. So there, there are other. There are other instances where locals are treated differently. And, and I think it is right to say that. We want to treat everyone the same in the STR work group, but. Affordable housing is, is looming above our heads somewhere and, and, and it needs to be addressed. That we can't, we can't solve it, but we certainly can make it easier for people trying to attain year-round housing. I'm gonna go back to, I think Nat was next, Barry.
Please.
Thanks. Just, Dave, thank you for that. And, and again, I just wanted to say. I've been taking a few notes. I didn't wanna say anything at the outset. I was a little late and trying to get my act together. Um. But getting, listening to like, especially what John said, John Giorgio said, um. About the zoning part versus the general bylaw part, it's all sort of starting to stink in to my head too. Like Judy having to kind of sort of buy into it enough. If you think about this, we haven't had any regulation at all. Except general noise bylaws and things like that. This is like, sort of like nineteen seventy-one. Now, no zoning. Build whatever you want. You have permits, but that's about it. Okay? There was just, there was no zoning. This is like, kinda like. Having no zoning for a lot longer than nineteen seventy-two and all of a sudden, we have to come up with something. And listening to what everyone has said about both the zoning part. Of this, it's sort of like the zoning part is sort of like a right to rent versus. All the other laws and bylaws we're gonna have to control that right. That's just, that sounds just like everything else we've been doing since nineteen seventy-two. There's rights, there's a lot of rights to do things here, but you can't just do anything you feel like, even if you have a right to do it. So. One of the things that caught me with Stacy's, uh. Comments, you know, going through that list. And I just, I'm sorry if I don't, you know, I'm a little late in the sense of, Dave, I talk to you all the time, but I don't know every single thing that's going on with this. The one property. Concept that Stacy talked about, where did that come from? That's an interesting one. That might. Need a little. I don't know. One, say if you have four properties and you can only rent one. Short-term. Am I correct, Stacy, in, in what you said?
Um, yes, although, although. Yeah, that is what I said. And the group, just to, to clarify where that came from. So first, to make sure. It's clear, the idea is that the people who have, who have four properties and are currently renting them would get to continue to do so, right? They're among the, those.
Oh, the grandfather part, yeah, yeah.
Grandfather right. Um, and the reason, and then the group talked about moving to two. Rather than one, and then just recently they shifted to one. And the rationale of that is. I think going back to the group's goals, the group really is trying to. Allow. People who have houses and live in those houses at least part of the time. To rent their houses. Whereas if you own two houses. Their idea was you can't really be living in both of them, even part of the time.
Right.
So one of those houses is, is being operated as a business. Only being short-term rented. It's not ever being used as a residence for either seasonal or, or year-round. Uh, people who actually live there. And that was why they, that, that was that, that provision, the point of that provision, as well as the moving to four. Um, only allowing for contracts after it's sold. Both of those are really designed to try to prevent. People, the homes on Nantucket from just being businesses or hotels.
Right. Yeah.
That was the rationale.
No. Yeah, I, I, I understand that and I appreciate your, you know, solid explanation. I, I know that that's gonna raise a flag and people that live here, especially the older property owners that have. Multiple properties. That doesn't mean you're rich, just so you know. That's, we've grown in value. Fifteen hundred percent in thirty years. So there's a lot of strange situations here that don't make any sense to somebody that just bought a house. So my point is, I think that that's a really good idea. But I just think it needs to be really clear. And how that's gonna work. The other thing I wanted to ask, and, and this is for somebody that. Is really deeply entrenched in this. The thirty, the thirty-one days are less. I, I still feel like. We've been snuckered by the state because of that. That has been the biggest. Catch twenty-two in this whole entire conversation, because thirty-one days is a long time to rent on Nantucket. Okay, that is not a short rental. We used to argue about seasonal rental versus year-round. There was no such thing as a short-term rental. That term never was used ever until twenty nineteen. Is there? The way we have the bylaws. Way you have the bylaws crafted now in draft. Is there gonna be? Room for change? I mean, that's the key. I think that's what John is talking about. Having the zoning part is pretty solid, but the other stuff can be changed as time goes on and time evolves. If the state allows towns, because I think this is gonna happen. Where they're gonna be able to, the rental tax is gonna. Gonna come, I bet you they allow that for above thirty-one days at some point. Because there's too much money being lost by communities for seasonal rentals that were. That just happened to be above the thirty-one days. If there's a change in. What the definition of a short-term rental is. Is there gonna be room in these bylaws to adjust that? That's what I kind of think it's, it's good about having general bylaws. It's a lot easier to change them than zoning. That's kind of how I see us moving forward over time. Am I onto something with that or is that like, make no sense?
So, so, so Nat, if you. Nat, if you look at the definition of short-term rental in this bylaw. It is rental periods with a change in occupancy in excess of thirty-one calendar days. Shall not be considered a short-term rental. Which means that you wouldn't have to apply for a certificate of registration and none of these other restrictions would apply. If in your scenario, the state was to amend the legislation to increase that number. That would affect the taxes that the town receives. Um.
Right.
But it would not change this definition. You'd have to amend the bylaw. If you wanted to follow suit, but you can have a different definition. For purposes of regulation. Um. Through this either a zoning or general. If that makes sense.
Yes, no, that's good. And I appreciate your answer. And that's where I'm sort of thinking is. Having the, the sort of a. The overlay part of the zoning, we'll call it. That's basically the right to rent your house. But the rest of it is. General bylaw that can. Change over time. Will a lot easier than a zoning bylaw. Which I think makes a lot of sense of how we do, how we're moving forward. This makes sense to me as far as. Keeping things sort of. We're starting fresh. I mean, this is a brand-new thing. It's never been done. And, and. And, and there's a lot of, you know, that's why there's so much controversy. I, I think that this so far, I'm, I'm in agreement with what you're doing.
Barry, trying to talk, you're muted. All right.
But you can't read my lips, Joe? I said. I'm gonna jump to Joe and then back to Barry.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, first off, Mrs. Barrett, uh, Mrs. Smith and John Giorgio, thank you. And the STR group for putting this all together. It's a, a lot of work. Um, the one thing I was kind of curious, we're, we're a little nervous about grandfathering. If, if there is something that's outside of this box, how do we assess that? Is it case-by-case basis? It becomes with a. Planning board, as Dave mentioned, you know, we don't want anyone to be unfairly treated or whatever something we might miss. So I'm just kind of worried about. What happens at that later date if something, once we do get this all defined and everything's boxed in. You know, what's happening if something's outside the line? So how do we address that? And then the other thing I like is I'd rather this stay at the planning board level, um. When I was on the CONCON, the fines and fees that we were able to give were in the school and I really liked the five thousand dollar fee and it was in, uh. Forbes magazine talking about. The STRs in New York City and that's something that they have. So I think we're in keeping with a lot of the country. Um, but yeah, I just think that this really needs to stay within the planning board, not, uh, in the zoning. So, thank you.
Can I answer your, your first question? I, I don't know if this is a full answer. I mean, I think the answer of. The bylaw could certainly be changed, but I think just to note that. The group wanted to create this mechanism for hardship. Or, right, so i- in case it turns out that there's a reason why. Uh, someone would basically be losing their home as a result of this bylaw. Um, because there were exceptions they hadn't thought of. Um, you know, the house is only seasonal or, or whatever it might be. Um, that was why they wanted to put that in. In as one of the clauses. I'm not sure if that, that's answering your question.
No, did, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was there.
I, I also, I also think that, that by grandfathering all existing, that we, we deal with a lot of the, those. Unknown situations if they're already renting. Um, Barry?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sulzer has had his hand raised for quite.
Well, I, I, I can't see him.
I know you can't, but that's okay. So I'd like you to turn to him.
Okay.
And then just, I would love a closing comment as, as we get toward the end of this.
All right, perfect. Jim?
I'm sorry, I.
I'm sorry, I I couldn't figure out how to do the electronic hand.
No.
Uh, sitting there like this, but um. Just a few points uh for the the planning board, thank you so much for listening to this, we worked very hard from many different points of view to try to come toward a. A reasonable middle, one that helps of. People who need to rent their homes as S T Rs, and also one that tries to help preserve neighborhoods. I just want to address a little bit the point that Peter Kahn brought up, I thought he he brought up a great point about. We have in general really tried to treat seasonal residents and year-round residents the same. Um, I know we all are aware of the incredible amount of uh contribution we get from seasonal re- residents. Not just taxes, not just economy, culturally, you know. Educationally, in many, many ways, they're fantastic members of the community, we know that. But I want to give you my perspective as a teacher on why we're thinking about this one exemption. Uh, to stay at not the level of nine for year-rounders, so as a teacher. There's there's, and those of you who have been teachers know this, there's a, there's a saying. Equal is not always fair, and it has to do with there are some kids, for instance, who have special needs of different type. They may be very bright, but they need to process information in a different way. They may need a teacher's aid for part of the day, or even for the whole day, that other students may not need. You may think that's not equal, but it's fair, and we all know Nantucket has a special need. Our special need is to keep roofs over the heads of our year-round residents. That's a a real special need, and we have to address that, and. This is one case where maybe fair is not exactly equal, we've really tried to treat. Seasonal and year-round residents the same as much as we can, but I do think in this one case. Maybe equal is not fair, and it's really worth trying to help year-round residents in this perhaps small way, but important. Thank you.
Jim, you said that so much better than I did. Um, uh, also, just a quick note, a- and. Um, cause I don't think we've mentioned it, and it isn't in in any of the paperwork, is that. And maybe someone from the planning board has some suggestions for us, we've been talking about creating a path. Of some sort from the four-week or four contracts to the nine contracts over time, a- and in honesty. Really, the 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 four weeks is about changing the math. To 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 um, to keep the investor-only S T Rs out of our pool of S T Rs. And that's really what the four-week, four-week thing's about, it's about making the math not work for those people, um. So, we've debated on how to create a path from the four to nine. We've talked about its four years, we've talked about some other things, but any suggestions from the planning board or anyone on what. They think is an idea there would would, I think, help give the S T R work group some clarity. Um. Kathy?
Thanks, I just wanted to to go back with just a question, actually, back to the one um S T R. Ruling the other, the law that's there in the bylaw about one dwelling, so if you have more than one dwelling on your property, you can only rent one of them. Um, so, I guess. Interestingly enough, a lot of people think that Nantucket together represents S T R owners and and off, you know, off-island people. Actually, only about half of the people who are supporting us are in that category, and the rest are year-rounders, and it's actually. The year-rounders, um, and Nat brought up that that's, that could be problematic for year-round folks, that's who I'm hearing from on the the one S T R. Per um, per owner, so that's, you know, going forward in the future, that's not an option for anybody. To do that, um, y- year-rounders as well, who may want to buy another property and use it to help finance their child's education and so forth and so on. So that is the what I'm hearing on that one, you know, it's not one per property, it's one or one, it's one, just one, which is. Why we went back from two to one and so forth, is, so any help that the planning board can give us in that, and any data that we can see on that. I just think that's an interesting one, that when you think about needing full support, needing overwhelming support to pass these bylaws as a. As a group, um, you know, we may want to take something like that. And make it something that's, you know, there's a package that are the things that are absolutely supported across the board, and maybe others that. Are maybe a little bit concerning to some of the voters, or many of the voters perhaps, and making those be um. Voted on as part of the, as part, an optional part of the package, so if they're passed, they're part of the thing that's linked to the zoning bylaw. Um, but I just bringing that up because it's really the um, it's mostly the the folks that are um, that are voters that I'm hearing from that are concerned about that one. Thanks.
Anybody on the planning board wanna address that, or?
Mister Chairman, can I just? Ask, I I might be wrong, okay, so the one property means a lot with a house. Or two, or is it dwelling?
One dwelling.
You can have three dwellings, is it a dwelling?
A dwelling.
Dave, I mean, I know you know, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, Kathy's right, it's a, it's a dwelling, um. And I, I mean, just a little, you know, I think the thought process there was, is that. Um, for, at least for those of us that support it, because obviously the whole group doesn't, but the the thought. For for those that support it was, when we looked at how many people owned just one S T R. It was, and Matt could tell me if I'm wrong, but I think it was about seventy-five percent of all S T Rs were owned by one. People only had one, and so. Our concern was that if we allow two, that seventy-five percent could double. And if we've heard anything from the public, part of it is, is we don't want more S T Rs, and we want to manage the ones we have. And so that, that was the reason, um, whether it's good or bad, I I I understand Kathy's concerns and her constituents' concerns. Um, and would just love to hear from anyone on the board that has any other ideas surrounding that. Joe?
Okay, so can I just?
Okay. Oh, yeah, but.
No, I just, I I just. This is one of those things that may have to get tweaked at some point. I can see this as being, like, for example, Dave, primary, secondary, tertiary on one lot, we just. You know, there's, you can build three houses on a lot, you could have one year on rental, there may be changes in. Things with year on rentals, maybe a tax exemption or some sort of, something like that coming down the road, which would be a great thing. But.
This is a, this is a difficult thing, I think this is gonna end up being one of those things that gets. Adjusted, I think that what you're saying, Dave, with the seventy-five percent. The grandfathered part of this art, of this proposal is gonna sort of take care of what's already out there. So that we don't increase it, and I too, I do understand that, I'm not, I I follow this, I just have to. Keep trying to keep it straight, and that makes sense, that I get that point, but. Um, there may be people out there that didn't choose to rent short-term yet and may need to. Because of, you know, financial issues, kids going to college, et cetera, et cetera, there's all kinds of different things that happen to people. So I think it may need to go to two, I certainly don't think it should be three. Maybe there'd be a process to get to two, maybe that wouldn't be automatic, maybe you would have to. You know, you can't get an excursion without showing the right credentials, so I mean, there's always something, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I mean, and that's the beauty of a bylaw, right, that that if it's not working, we can go to town meeting and get a simple majority. I, and I think, and and I may be talking out of school, but I'm pretty sure that most of this work group would not be in favor of having multiple. S T Rs on one property, um, I.
On one property, I agree, I agree with that.
But, but.
I'm talking about separate.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep, thank you, uh.
You could have, you know.
You good, Nat? Okay, Matt?
With an. Uh, I was just picking up, cleaning up a loose end, I think I can speak to for Nat, earlier when you asked about if. The state moves the law on thirty-one being the limit on short-term, or changing wherever that line is, I think. In the way that this group has set up this framework, I don't think it needs to be changed for that, because the only two things that would be impacted if they extend that are. You know, homes that didn't need a license before, and now are suddenly considered S T Rs, but the, as they're setting it up, you can add. A license um, for a property. Uh, you you can add a license for a property, and you don't need the nine, the four would cover it during peak, because you're doing a thirty-one-day rental in that case, so it's unlikely to be. Impacted by that limit in any way, so I don't think that would come into play, except for needing license if they had, uh, if they already had one. S T R that was doing, say, eight, one-week rentals, and then the second property, which was doing what wasn't considered S T Rs, because they were. Thirty or one upon rentals, would now be considered that, that would be the one consideration or exception I could see where the but, yeah, Stacy.
Well, just, John spoke to this and said, because this bylaw defines short-term rentals as less than thirty-one days. Even if the state definition changes, nothing in these regulations change unless you all want to change the. That definition in the bylaw, so there's no automatic impact. Of that, there there's the tax impact, but there's no regulatory impact.
That's right.
That comes into play, so it's 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 not relevant to this, to this bylaw.
Okay, in the state, you'll have to have both registrations anyway, so I suppose that doesn't matter, okay, thank you, Stacy.
Um, great, um, is there any S T R work group member that would like to ask a direct question to either staff or a planning board member? We good? Any other planning board members have questions for work group members, or? No, um, I, Stacy, thank you very much, the whole work group, thank you very much. Um, as you all can see, we've done a lot of work here, I think the planning board's giving you some good suggestions. Um, and and it's back to work for us.
Yeah, so, we're getting toward closing here, and there's really two thoughts that I want to leave you with. Um, consensus is is a tough thing to deal with. Because you you have to go through and listen to everyone, and begin to to coalesce what what comes out of that. For the greater good, there's there's a beautiful Greek proverb, which I'm gonna change just a bit, it's it's the wheels of government grind slowly. But exceedingly fine, so your product. Here has been a labor of love, I would dare say, and really has been well-vetted. Um, the the thing I have to caution you though is, if if you want to kill this thing, make it perfect. Make it absolutely perfect, you will kill it. Like any bylaw or anything else we do, it it's it's a matter of foundation, and then over time. Adapting it depending upon how it goes, again, Voltaire came up with a wonderful thing. Perfect should never be the enemy of the good. This thing is damn good, in my opinion, it really is, you put your heart and your soul to it, into it. Will it need tweaks over time? Absolutely. I I, but that shouldn't be holding you back, there's a certain stage where it's time to move this thing forward, because as I said. You've done your best with it, and uh, yeah, I believe it it is in exceptionally good shape. So I encourage us to keep moving along, but get ready, it's 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 time, it, the production time is almost here. So thanks.
Thank you, Barry, um, so I guess that would probably be the end of the joint meeting, o- one thing, though. If Stacy and Roberto could get together and figure out how we could have Roberto in one of our short-term rental work group meetings. I think would, would be, okay, would be amazing, because uh, you are very important and we don't want to keep you out.
We did a joint meeting with the board to help, because there are a couple of things that I see in this regulation that we definitely have to talk about.
Perfect, great, look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, I am gonna call this portion of the meeting to an end, do I need to take a vote? I don't think so, do I? No, thanks again, Stacy, thanks, all my uh, my my friends on the short-term rental work group for being here and for your good questions.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rudy, thank you, Rudy.
And John can return.
Mm-hmm, there he is.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, thank you all. All right, um, just a question for Meg or Leslie, do we need to. Uh, close out or reconvene, or do you control of any, okay, great, so we're just.
Moving on to the next thing.
Wonderful, uh, the next is the election of officers, and I guess um. Uh, the process for this, uh, Meg, would be for us to make a nomination, and I have a question with that. It, when you make a nomination, can you make two nominations for, at the same time, for a chair and vice-chair and vote on that, or one at a time?
One at a time, please.
Mm-hmm, okay, so what we'll be doing is uh, first, you know, looking for a nomination, and then. Uh, depending on the vote, continuing, we'll start with the chair, and then we'll go vice-chair, and while I have the floor. Um, I would like to nominate Dave as the as the next chairperson. And if that is acceptable, I would look for uh, someone to second that.
Um, nominations don't require seconds.
Oh, wonderful.
But multiple people can be nominated.
Thank you, thank you, um, so, do we do, uh, with the process, do we vote on that, or do we ask around the board for other nominations?
You, the way, the way I've always understood is you should inquire if there's any more nominations.
Okay.
Uh, if there are no more, hearing none, you would close the nomination, and then the board would, could vote.
Great, thank.
On that particular office.
Thank you, Barry, so with that, I would uh, ask the board if there are any other nominations for chair. Seeing no hands, um, I would ask for a vote. So I guess we are Zoom, and we would go in order, um. Dave?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain.
Wow, okay.
You can vote for yourself.
Doesn't feel right.
All right, uh, then I'll just pass you over, uh, abstaining, and uh, next, uh, Nat?
Aye.
Uh, Barry?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
And then the chair votes aye, so.
Um, see, I didn't have to vote.
With that, now.
Thank you for that vote of confidence, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and uh, good luck, uh, now with that, um, now that Dave is our new chairperson. Would he be nominating the vice-chair, or can I make a nominee?
I'm I'm gonna let you go, John.
All right, well, if I still have the floor, I will nominate uh, Joe to be vice-chair, and if there are any other nominations. I would ask the board um, to say something. Seeing none, seeing silence, or hearing silence?
I'll second that.
You don't.
You don't have to second that, all right, we'll go around, we'll start with the new chair, Dave?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And Joe?
I'm gonna abstain.
Wow. Very good, all right, uh, with that, um, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. I am no longer chair, so at this point, I would hand the meeting over to Dave. And wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, for your time.
Thank you.
I just saw a thousand pounds of weight come off your shoulder.
Yes, Barry, um, I I can't, you you would have to let David.
Yes, Bear, I acknowledge.
Either it does make, oh my god, I'm mastered to two. Either it does make, oh my god, I'm mastered to two now. So two things very quickly, John, thank you so much for your service and your time and it has been a pleasure to be a board member while you were running. The ship here as the chair, so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you Barry.
Uh, my second comment real quickly, Dave, Joe, come on, when you went into the ballot box here, tell me you didn't put a circle by your name, abstain, please. Come on.
No, nobody saw Barry, nobody.
All right, thank you.
Uh, all right, thank you and thanks again and John, thank you very much for all you've done as chair. Um, so on to the appointments, um. First off is the coastal resiliency, I think Carl just recently went on, are you, you all right with staying on Carl?
Uh, Dave, my work is just beginning. I I would very interested to stay on and continue to uh. To get my legs, get my feet wet.
Great.
It's definitely in my wheelhouse and um, enjoying myself so far. Um, yes, I would be more than willing to represent the planning board on the committee.
Great news, someone want to make a motion?
We don't have to, but I'll make a motion.
Oh, that's true, we don't have to make a motion, oh well.
Well, you should, you should accept the nomination, see if there's anyone else who's interested, that would be the appropriate protocol.
Okay, uh, anyone else interested in being on crack? And that would be uh, the board.
I I'd rather see, I'd see Kyle stay on crack.
Yes.
Yes.
Crack suits him.
Carl's preferred for crack.
All right, so uh. Let's go to a vote on that, John Trudell.
Aye.
Carl?
He. It's just the planning board members.
Oh, okay, that's right, Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Barry, did I call on you?
You probably don't want to, but I.
And I and I'm an I. So that's unanimous. Second is the cannabis advisor.
Thank you.
Thank you Carl, uh, cannabis advisor committee currently is Abby. Abby with us somewhere? On the other page?
I'd like to nominate Abby if she's accepting of the nomination.
I will accept it, thank you.
Anybody else? No other nominations will go will go to vote, then John?
Aye.
I'm an I, Carl? No, or not Carl, I'm sorry, Joe?
Aye.
Just going, I'm going around the board. Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I was an I, so unanimous.
Thank you, Abby.
Uh, next community preservation commission. John?
Uh, if I may, uh. Speak on this, you know, I I've been, I I love serving on the on the um CPC board. Um, I think I was very instrumental in in uh assisting to the best of my ability. Uh, however, I know that when uh, there was a a time where Joe was on that board and because of. The the position where he, when he was elected and then afterwards, I would just offer this to Joe, if he had a consideration to go back on that board, I would. Um, definitely step aside to allow you to continue what you were were doing when you were there. Um, that being said, if you didn't, um, I I would be more than happy to stay on. But I offer that to you because I know uh, there was some unfinished business that you were talking about doing.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it would be a year and it was all of the um, making plaques and going around and taking photo documentation and. Trying to get uh CPC dollars for all of the gifts and properties that they have taken care of and, you know, restored. So, uh, yeah, John, if you just for a year would set us, you know.
Absolutely. Sure, so then with that, I would nominate Joe for that position.
Any other nominations? All right, let's go to the vote on this, John?
Aye.
Um, Joe?
Abstaining.
Barry?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, so uh, unanimous, other than the one abstention. Okay, um. On to second dwellings. Am I on the right page here? Yep, okay. Um. So we have two second dwellings, are we doing these as a consent vote together?
Yeah, you can and you can batch the secondary dwellings garage, the one garage apartment and the one tertiary dwelling altogether and one vote should. No question about a particular matter.
I I just have one question about the um, Normans. Okay, so like on a site plan that uh. And the new pavilion, it seems like the structure to the. East has some appendages that look like would be in the setback, is that something we should be worried about? Just something to look at or I just don't want him building something and then, you know, getting in the end and he's in the setback. I know there's a screening fence, but it looks like, see, there's three little. Devices?
Yeah.
Within the setback? That's the only thing I kind of caught. That we had a concern. If it's, I don't know what it's for. But it looks like it's it's attached to the structure, that's going to be in a setback.
Please Ben.
Thank you.
Your, uh, Ben Norman for the applicant, um, that's an outdoor shower, uh, fencing. But the floor of that outdoor shower is patio surface, so it's technically a sh- a a fence, which is allowed within your setback.
Yeah, so the fence won't be attached to the structure, just looked like it was attached, so.
The fence is attached to the structure, yep. But my understanding is that's not a a a setback uh, encroachment.
Yeah, now now you just find what it is, that's fine, I didn't know. What it was gonna be, so thank you.
Thanks Ben. Anyone else have any questions on anything else? Nope, okay, so uh, second dwellings, we have Susan Gray at thirty four Essex Road, Ben Norman five Doc Ryder Drive. Catherine Cook, trustee eight eighty-five Low Beach Road. And Catherine Cook, trustee eighty-five Low Beach Road.
Making motion to, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ben.
No, go ahead, you're doing wonderful.
Oh, I I should have started to raise my hand, I'm uh, forget, forgetful, but now that I have it, I would uh, make a motion to um, endorse all or approve all.
Second?
Yeah, per staff recommendations, yeah.
Yes, I'll second it.
All right, seconded, motion made by John, seconded by Joe, Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well, so it's unanimous, on to A and Rs. Um, and we're gonna batch these two, correct?
Yeah, you can batch them too, but I would ask that. On the agenda, eighty-five Fairgrounds Road was listed and then a town, um. Roadway yard sale, taking in conveyance for Milestone, Nobody or Farm in Hinsdale was also included. Those are not ready to move forward with a vote, one is just a resign and doesn't require a vote, the other. Wasn't ready and it was a placeholder, so we can remove those from the batch.
Okay. So we're 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 pulling Alora M Duffy at eighty-five Fairgrounds and we're pulling the town of Nantucket Milestone, Nobody or Farm and Hinsdale Road. Okay, all right, perfect, so we have uh. Timothy A Parsons at thirty-three Hinsdale, Town of Nantucket at seven Amelia Drive. K twenty-two LLC, one twenty-six and one twenty-six R Main Street. Um, K twenty-two LLC, one twenty-six and one twenty-six R Main Street Perimeter Plan. Eric Goddard, trustee Meadowview Pond Trust, fifty-four and fifty-six Meadowview Drive. Robert B Martin. And Robin K Martin in three and nine Mill Street or South Mill Street. The Lord Family LLC, Briar Patch LLC fifteen and nineteen Coffin Street in Sconset. And Mark F Perrone, Thomas, to Qdo, sorry about that, Thomas, and uh, at one Hatch Circle. Do I have a motion?
Motion to endorse, sir.
With staff recommendations, yes, I'll second.
All right, I'm gonna give that one to you, John, um.
No, it's the second, yeah.
This the second, yeah, um. All right, so for the votes, Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Joseph?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Alrighty. Onto previous plans. Um. First one, sixty-six-two Walt Street, uh, modification of a previously approved second. Dwelling, um, so this is before us because um. What was built and what we agreed to permit are not the same thing, so uh, we as a board, I guess I'll let Leslie speak to this.
Actually, I'll defer to Megan, she's more familiar with this particular application. So let me pull up the application, um, but in short, um. The board had had a lengthy conversation that. I think took two meetings to get through. Uh, for this second dwelling approval because as a part of that. Was a second driveway approval, uh, the board had discussions at length about the driveway. Access to the garage being constructed in a way that. Visibly didn't look like a driveway and I think what they landed on was um, the two shell. Tracking pads into the garage and what was constructed was a cobble driveway, so. Because of that, I was unable to sign off on the permit, um, and the options were for the applicant to come back to the board. See if the board would be inclined to change the driveway material approval or the other option would be the applicant would have to re. Construct the driveway to in accordance with the approved plan. So this is the plan. That was approved and we're talking about this driveway over here. But this, or sorry, I guess it's crushed shell not cobble, it's been a little while since I did the inspection. Um, but it's not the the two tracking pads with the grass.
Can you give us what was in the original approval, Megan?
Yes. So it's a standard letter. And then it was the, this is signed plan. Uh, where it detailed this type of. Material for the driveway.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please John.
Um, I I do recall this and I, and this was at a time where there was a lot of um. Intense arguments based with second dwellings, especially in the uh, the town. Um, close proximity to the town, uh, we reviewed a few on, I believe it was Westchester as well as Lily Street. Uh, there was another one, uh, I I can't recall the the address of that one. Um, though this was discussed um, in detail. And with the two curb cuts, uh, we had suggested alternative ideas. Uh, there was, I think, ideas about honeycomb and grass coming through so that it would still pose as a driveway, but it wouldn't look so obvious. And we did offer some suggestions and I think we made, um, you know, in the report, we gave. Uh, enough to go on, but if th- this is clearly opposite of what we had talked about and discussed over lengthy uh. Or uh, multiple meetings, so I I have a hard time kind of looking at this, coming back and and approving this. Um, this clearly is just a a blatant of um. Uh, disregard for what we had talked about and spent a lot of time discussing, um, only to have it, you know, looking like we'll do and then we'll ask for forgiveness. This is one of those where we had uh, enough. Information given um, to the applicant and I'm not in favor of this. Um, I think it we should stand to what we had approved and let the owner. Um, do what we discussed and and uh. You know, and approved.
Could I speak to the application?
Uh, one, yes, one second Elizabeth, let's let the board. Board have their way and then and then you're more than welcome. Um. Anybody else? Joe?
Yeah, I I um, sorry, I I didn't follow the first meeting that you guys had on this one, but. I feel like there's less visual impact and I feel like the shell driveway, that's the main one, is more important and I feel that these. Uh, cobblestones or or pads with grass in between, I think have less visual impact. And don't seem as uh, you know, as as. Two curb cuts right now, I think a lot of structures or a lot of properties just seem really intrusive and I feel that this is less intrusive. And I know where John's coming from, but I feel like this is a better solution to what could be. What was originally recommended on the first application with the shell driveway, I just don't like that impact. So I I kind of prefer what's going in this direction, so I'm fine with what occurred as well.
Hold. For clarity, it's shell now, Megan?
Yes, it's shell now, so that's not what was approved, the honey.
Gotcha.
Grass is what was approved.
So I I think you have it back, you have it back, you have, you got it backwards, Joe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Barry?
And just through you to Megan, just reiterate the reason why that was done as part of the decision.
Too many, the visual impacted, so it wouldn't appear like it was a driveway.
And we know why that got changed by the applicant.
We're about to find out.
He's here, I think he's here to answer that, so.
Yeah.
This all came about in a, all second dwellings, um, when they're issued a building permit, I have to sign off on them before they're issued a CO, so that's how. I don't know if there was a miscommunication between the initial applicant bringing it on to Elizabeth, I I'm unsure, so I'm sure she can help shed some light on that.
You're welcome to ask her, Barry.
Well, here's here's a scoop at this point, I mean procedurally, we we don't really have the public comment in any way, shape or form. On any of any of our A and Rs, so.
I think, I think she's representing.
It's gonna be your call, sir. But I I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear out there, that's all.
Well, if she's representing.
She's representing the applicant.
If she's representing the applicant, then she's more than welcome to speak, yes. Um, so Elizabeth, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so um. So what happened, it was that there was a lot of construction to make this building happen and having too little tracks. Didn't make any sense because it was gonna, it was gonna get broken down, the grass was gonna be driven over, it was gonna be a a mud hole, so it stayed that way. Until, you know how it goes on Nantucket, the construction goes, you know, it's almost fourth of July, the clients are coming, everybody's in there, so it stayed that way, not maliciously. But because we didn't have time to complete it before they took possession of it and then I think it. It 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 just kind of stayed that way and when there was a visit and it was called on. Uh, we went back to the client because on the HDC approval. And if and the HDC approval is a part of this application before you today, it was approved as a shell driveway. So the HDC board approved it as all shell with the little Belgium block at the garage. And then the planning board approved it in in a different configuration, so the two boards. Are not in agreement, so we asked the client, which one do you prefer? And they preferred having the shell driveway because, you know, this area is prone to flooding, so the grass being driven over kind of gets muddy. Um, it's hard to maintain, so um, so we said, well, let's try back with the planning board and see if um. If they might allow it and I have a picture of what's been installed, if you want me to share my screen.
Uh, I, I'm fine with that, yes. I think Megan has to let you, yeah, there.
So this is how it looks, it's. You know, I guess, uh, you know, the the grass can be fixed a little bit, it's a very, very short driveway. And by the way, this property was actually three property, it was number sixty, number sixty-two and number sixty-four that were merged into one. And then this location prior to this building being there was a full driveway separate from the other one. So it's not an additional curb cut, it was pre-existing.
Thank you, is is Stevens? On our call?
Hey. Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, um, yeah, I don't, I don't believe I sat on this application. Um. I don't recall this one, so if I did, I would just speak up.
Okay.
Uh, it looks like, uh, actually, it appears as if it was approved on consent from looking at the application.
Okay. Um, staff, what do, what do we usually do when we come to situations like this?
Can I make a quick comment, Mr. Chairman, before we?
Yes.
Get into this, seeing that last picture.
Get into this. Seeing that last picture, Elizabeth, I don't think I know you. How are you? Nice to see you. Is that the only picture you have of this? I didn't drive down here, but I see that this is off the paved part of Wall Street.
This is in the dirt.
At the end, yeah.
It's in the dirt road.
This is past, this is past where you turn, turn right at the old table property and head to a tablet, correct? So you go straight, and it's like, okay. That, my, you know, personally, I mean, I'm not gonna, this is unusual for something like this to happen, but it's also unusual for us to require those blocks like that. I mean, that's not something that we do that often. When I look at something that's on a dirt road, I think differently than I do when it's on pavement. And that's one of the reasons that we're so stringent about about eight Belgium block aprons tying things into the pavement, making sure that there's no degradation from the new project to the town road or private road or whatever. But in a case like this, you know, I mean, whatever our reasons were at the time, I'm not even, I can't remember this application that vividly, but it's, if this road was paved tomorrow, you would have to put in an apron. You would have to do a lot of work right here. Um, I don't know if that was part of the reason, but the softness that you're taking, talking about squishiness. I mean, that's, I I understand that. You'd have to do those blocks in the whole grass area. The whole thing would have to be done because people can't drive like that. They're gonna drive off of it. That's just how things are. So that would be my comment right now, as far as like, if if we asked you to go back to this, I mean, the the, what's seen in the plan with that little perfect laid out little track for a car is not gonna work in today's, you know, sneaking two vehicles in or trying to to do something that you're gonna drive on the grass. I don't have a personal problem with leaving it the way it is, but maybe with a condition that there'll be some changes in the future, if 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 there is, in fact, improvements to this road. That'd be my, my existing, not existing, my current thinking, but there's a lot more to say, I'm sure, so. Thank you, Nat. Um, I I tell you what, my biggest problem with this is is that we approved something and and something else ended up there. And and I, and I'm not, don't get me wrong, Elizabeth, I'm not saying it was purposeful or anything, but I'm just saying that if if we as a board approve things, and then they're not built as we approve them, and we just say that's okay, I I think that sends a really bad message. So I just think we need to be thoughtful about how we do this. If if we're gonna, if we're gonna let this change happen, we need to to be thoughtful and have some really good reasons, or it's gonna really not make us look good as a board. And that's my major concern. Leslie?
Uh, someone asked the question about how does staff usually handle these things?
Yeah.
And usually, if it was a shell driveway and the person used piece stone, or it was a cobblestone apron, and they used Belgian block instead, we wouldn't even bring it to your attention because all of those meet the zoning by law. We would just sign off on it as long as it met the basic requirements. But in this case, and Megan can correct me if I'm wrong, it was brought back and put on the agenda because you had such a significant discussion about it, and because it did involve the second driveway, and because it was over a few meetings, and your discussion about those materials was very specific. So this is a little bit different than the usual sign off.
How long ago was this? Two years, three years, maybe? Gotta be.
No, the building. The building was just finished um last summer in the fall.
That doesn't mean, it takes forever to build a project like. John?
Yeah, so David, I just wanted to agree with what you had said, the process that we did. And going forth with other decisions, it doesn't really hold much weight for us when we make a decision after not, and and what Leslie was saying, not for for various reasons, we discussed this over multiple meetings. And just to have something changed drastically and just go along with it, I think it it sets a bad precedent for future people to, with applications to say, no, we can just do what we want. Again, there was a reason why we did it. I don't want to rehash one hundred percent of the multiple discussions and meetings that we had for it, but it was second, second, you know, two curb cuts, close proximity to each other, something visual that really would stand out. Those are just a little, a couple of the minor things, and that's why, you know, it was brought up with honeycomb, similar to, I think we brought up in particular, an example on Westchester Street, there was a, there was a driveway that had that honeycomb, and you didn't really see it. I I think a couple of board members at the time agreed, like, I know what you're talking about from that aesthetic um view of that. And yes, you don't necessarily see it. It's, it establishes a a strong area for the car to park on, and obviously grass to grow through all those honeycombs, so it just kind of died out. So again, as what you had said, Dave, Dave, you know, it it just, there's a reason why we gave a a decision, and we expect our decisions to be upheld, not to come back and then overturn it just because they did what they wanted to do.
Um, has there any been any board members that have visited the site before this meeting?
I'm sorry, no.
I I I don't know if anyone would have a problem with this, but I would almost like to continue it to the next meeting and have everyone go down there and see it before we do what we're we're gonna do. Is that, does everyone feel all right about that?
Yes, I do.
Barry?
Yeah, ju- just one thing, if if we do wind up reversing our decision, um, I I think it would be imperative upon us to to come up with a rather concrete finding about why we want it, why we're about to one eighty on our decision.
Agreed.
Well, that that way, we we at least have foundation, should ever, should it ever be challenged in any way, shape, or form.
And that's why I think everyone should go and walk, walk it and see it. And also, Mr. Chairman, through you, Leslie or Megan, can we get the minutes from this meeting? I mean, I I I just, for some reason, this is this one here, and I remember all the ones John's bringing up. Oh, I remember that. Oh, this, I remember this one. Lily Street, I remember Eight New Mill, and Leslie, I remember the one with the seventeen fifty-five horse driveway, too, in North Mill, but I don't remember this, and I just don't remember this, and I I need to see it. Because this is weird. I I, for some reason, whatever was the big deal about this, I don't remember it. So I agree with continuing. We should definitely continue this. This is, you know, this is an issue. Reminds me of that. A motion for that? Yeah. So I'll make a motion to continue. And this would be to July, right, Leslie? Not to like Monday, okay, Tuesday, whatever. They're not, can I, they're not getting fined or any, like, everything's fine, right? Waiting a month is not.
We just can't get a CO.
Okay, and is that, Elizabeth, that's not a problem?
Not a problem.
Okay, so let's, I I'll take a motion on that, please.
Yep, motion continue.
Thank you.
Second.
Oh, made, motion made by Nat, seconded by Joe. Nat?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so unanimous. We'll see you in July, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself on the next one.
Alrighty. Uh, that's Woodland Hills subdivision, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Megan?
So these are just some legal documents that the applicant is requesting that you re-endorse. This was already approved and endorsed pre-COVID, and they were in our pickup bin for ages, and then then eventually became still dated, and it just needs to be redone, so.
I don't, I don't need to appoint anyone.
Nope, just the four of you. If you could just please.
Need a motion?
Yes, please.
Any questions first off? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by Nat. Barry?
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, unanimous. Um. Onto Westmore. Megan?
The Westmore Club is requesting that the board endorse a partial release of restrictive covenant. Um, it specifically applies to one hundred A Cliff Road. And it's important to note that you all already, in theory, approved this through releasing that lot from the M C D. You did that through a minor modification. You made the finding that that request did not, was not significant enough to require a public hearing. That was subsequently, sequentially followed up with an endorsement of an A and R. Get tongue-tied by the end of the day. Um, so this is just from merely a formality at the request of the applicant's attorney so that they can deliver a clear title. So they are requesting that you go ahead and endorse this document.
Thank you, Megan. Entertain a motion, please. Unless anybody. Okay, uh, second?
I'll second this.
All right, motion made by Barry, seconded by Nat. Barry?
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Pugging right along. Hannibal, for Hannibal Lane, minor modification.
Yes, so they are requesting a minor modification um to deal with the length of the on-street parking space. It needs to be reduced by three feet to accommodate the property line and the location of the garage bay access. They're also asking for an increase in width of the driveway material there. In the initial design, there was a small grass strip, and it just doesn't make sense for that area. It's all, should be bricked, or excuse me, I guess, stoned over. Um, I did meet the applicant over there for a site visit and would be supportive at the staff level of that request. So I guess, unless you have any questions.
Through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, John.
Just a question for Meg. Meg, if I understand correctly, does the three-foot reduction still meets the standard and guidelines for a compact car, correct?
It does, and it's important to note that this does not go towards their parking calculation. It's actually an on-street parking space off the site that they were required to construct. That's outside their property line, so it it does dimensionally conform to a.
And and with that, we don't need to clearly identify with a sign. I'm not in favor of having signs all over, but so there's no requirement to show compact, correct? Okay.
And this, Megan, this doesn't change their parking calculations at all.
No, and they'll be before you, actually unrelated to this, on Monday for a change of use, where we can take a look at those parking calculations. This is, this has to do with the second driveway access special permit that they were granted a couple of years back.
Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification.
Second.
Oh, uh, motion made by John, seconded by Nat. John?
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Okay, Dylan Court, Form J thirty-four and thirty-five.
So these are two lots within the subdivision that, when it was created roughly, I believe, two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, um, the same structures were already in existence, so I think the applicant never found the need to come forward to request the Form J lot release, so it's just kind of housekeeping, as Nat likes to say.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Motion to endorse the Form J's.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, unanimous. Onto preliminary plans, we have Carl. Sherland, that's right, Sherland and Julie Fitzgerald Trustee, Carl H. Sherland Trust. Um, twenty-four Appleton Way, Appleton Road and Three Knops away. Um, just a freeze plan, right, Megan?
Yeah, yeah, it's, um, the intent of this is step one of a filing of a freeze plan. And it's important to note that this was filed with the town clerk in advance of town meeting. And it will require the follow-up of a filing of an AR definitive subdivision plan in order to enact the the freeze. I think they have seven months.
And it's the same thing, same thing their neighbors did, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah. Questions? Entertain a motion.
Motion to endorse.
Second.
All right, motion made by Joe, seconded by Barry. Joe?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Alrighty, um, onto the final item discussion of twenty-twenty-three town meeting and Article eighty-three outcome. I think we're gonna let Nat start this conversation.
No audible size, right?
Too late.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Uh, you all have already discussed this at length as members of the Planning and Economic Development Commission. As you all know, you voted to send a letter to the Select Board, which we transmitted to them today. But we thought, as planning board members, you may want to specifically discuss how your role as elected planning board members with five-year terms, who were elected to serve as planning board and planning commission members for five years, would be affected by the home rule petition if approved at the general court. And um, I guess your thoughts on your planning commission term possibly being changed by a vote of town meeting, not by the people who elected you at the polls? So that's why we put that on the agenda for you to discuss tonight, and to see if you want to send a separate letter from the N P N D C.
I mean. Barry's got his hands up now, and I'm sorry, he'd be.
But Nat can go, but I definitely want to comment.
Nat?
Well, I think, and and again, you know, the confusion of this article is evident, even with people that know the article and all the amendments that happened, the the ten-year term limit down to nine. Um, the, you know, issue of elected people, the article is focused on electing the at-large members that, you know, which is in and of itself questionable, and then yet the elected people that are already on the commission are actually taken off the commission if they've been on the planning board for nine years or more, which is like, it it, you know, it's it's kind of hypocritical, and it makes no sense if you're focused on this one issue so much. So the other issue is, obviously, is that we've been working on changing. I know that we're at the planning board right now, Leslie, but I'm just saying, we have been working on changing, you know, making changes to the commission makeup. And that was a vote of town meeting, certainly more than, more than a one-vote majority, to continue to allow us to do that, and we're in that process, just like what we just discussed at the outset of this meeting with the S D R's. There was a vote to 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 do that, and and it's being done, but it doesn't happen in a month. It takes, it takes time for these things, and we're pretty close to the end of of the N P N D C. Uh, you know, changes that we, you know, have been working on, so um, you know, we have an elected select board member as a county commissioner, we have an elected housing authority member, and the conservation commission member is appointed by the select board, but that person is appointed by the CONCOM itself for for us, so. by the select board, but that person is appointed by the Concom itself for for us. So the diversity of the planning commission, to me, the way it's set up is about as good as it gets, but it, you know, it does need some improvement, but it's pretty, pretty well pretty well you know, it it has a good mix and it has a good turnover. That's the other issue, this issue of this idea that we're gonna have better planning or better focused membership. I mean, if you look at the the changeover, it's it it's consistently changes. It's not like the same people there forever. So and we live on an island with limited amount of people that want to do this. So it's not like there's people knocking the door down to get on the planning commission, I can tell you that. So that'd be my only comment right now.
Thank you, Nat. Abby?
Hi, thank you. I just, I thought Leslie brought up a good point when she was saying one of the things that you might want to discuss is there is definitely that disconnect between, as you pointed out, like, these people were elected by a far larger group of our, you know, voting population than the people who are at town meeting and the even the amount of people at town meeting, you know, the past five-one vote, I just think that if you were gonna write a letter to the state, I would definitely highlight that because I think that that would be of a large concern if I were like putting the shoe on the other foot, and if you were from the state and something came like that, I would think that the state would definitely want a lot of consensus. So knowing that there is a variety of different issues, I think it would make sense to to definitely put that out there in the letter of saying, in addition to the issues that N P N E D C identified and put in their letter, which I think Mary did really good job of talking about kind of like the reconciliation between what happened at, you know, twenty twenty-two town meeting versus twenty twenty-three, but I think we hear as you're talking about the elected aspect and as Nat, you point, I think I necessarily understand that it meant that the people who are already elected, who were on it, wouldn't be on it anymore. I just think we should be crystal clear in that letter, and so that the state is well aware of the variety of issues from a technical standpoint that would happen with the of this. Also, the fact that, I mean, it seems a little inconsistent to have your entire planning board who does planning not actually be involved with the planning process. I think that might give people pie.
Thank you, Abby. Joe?
Yeah, I agree with what Abby just said. I really think that is important pieces to put into the letter. You know, I ran unopposed, so I mean, I wish there was four of the people willing to stand up and and, you know, want to be part of this and, you know, help out Nantucket, but we're not seeing that. And I think that, you know, whatever those extra seats, I think that'd be nice. We have a very strong at-large, you know, support group that's working with us. I think it's fantastic. But I also feel like, not to really get picky on that, but I feel like the A C C part of that or historical commission member, I I feel like if there is something that needs their attention, then we bring them on, but I don't think that that's really a necessary part of that equation for the planning of that. And, you know, it's this was brought up at town meeting, you know, all the planning board is overwhelmed. They don't, they don't have the time. I signed up for this. I know what I signed up for, so I'd like to stay on the N P D C because I really enjoy it. I think there's two parts to that. And I knew when I signed up that that was, you know, a twofold agreement that I made. So I really would like to, you know, keep this in place, and if it is expanding for two members, that's fine. I don't brum. I think that you know, Land Bank or Conservation Foundation or, you know, whoever that might be really is an important piece, but I don't think blowing up the way it is. And then the term limits, I I really find is gonna hamstring or hurt the us moving forward. And plus, you know, Libby is every, was it Wednesday, Thursday morning on the radio and say, we've got all these positions that are vacant and we need people and need people to step up, and there are some people stepping up, but there's, there's not like a long line of people that want to be on board sadly, so I really don't feel like this is a small move, but I do think there's a lot of inconsistencies what in Article eighty-three and I, you know, I'll end it there. So thank you.
Thank you. Joe, Barry?
I could have a lot to say here, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to be focused with you all, and I might need just a bit of latitude with your permission. Is that okay?
Make it fast, Barry.
This, I'm sorry, this is.
I'm kidding with you. I'm kidding with you.
All right, please, no, because I'm sorry, I I I am taking this one really seriously. I I do. And I would think you're gonna hear a motion from me that we are going to do a letter from the planning board to the select board and wherever else may be necessary for this to take place.
Excuse me, for you, Mister Chair, Barry, I I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have something short to say. I'm just wondering if you wanted to have the last kind of go around if you're going to be lengthy and and let me speak first, or I'll be happy to.
I, John, I'd be, I'd be happy to let you go, and I'm really trying to be focused here.
No, that's exactly, that's why I didn't want to after your, it sounds like you have a lot to say, and I didn't want to end after that. So if you allow me, I'll just briefly speak. So I did, we did have a vote at the N P E D C, and I did abstain from that, and I just wanted to, being that this is for the planning board, I just wanted to, you know, formally for this meeting, state my reasons, because I will, you know, whatever we decide to do, I would continue to use my 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 vote to abstain. For not because I disagree with my board members, I really don't. As I stated in the last meeting, I am pretty one hundred, well, actually, one hundred percent behind the board, everything that they've said, everything from the elected positions, how we were elected, and then we were elected to represent. And just the formal definition of abstain means to formally decline to vote either for or against a proposal or motion, and that might seem like a cop-out or something that I'm trying to, you know, shy away from, but you know, whether there was a a fair discussion, no discussion, lengthy discussion, misinformation at annual town meeting, regardless, there was a vote, and whether it be one vote or not, I am a proponent of the process, so I would again, I'm I'm behind my board, however, that that being in that process, I would continue if if given the opportunity to vote, I would abstain from this. So I hope you'll forgive me for that, and and I I just wanted to state that for my reasons before Barry gets a gets his go at it, but thank you very much for allowing me to speak on that.
Thank you, John. Barry?
So I'm gonna try to do this within five minutes. All right, more or less. All right, no, I could just be fair to you. So I have some questions for you at this point. I just want to see you raise your hands. If you don't, that means no. If you raise your hand, you're gonna say yes. So for my planning board peers here, did you understand and accept that you would be intimately involved with the N P and E D C the moment you ran for office and undertook it? Yes or no?
Amen.
Thank you. You're all in agreement with that. This is important. In doing such, you you also understood too that this would involve a fair amount of additional time, energy and commitment of resources on your part to undertake that task. Yes or no? Good. All right. That long-range planning is a critical component of planning. And that's evidenced by the fact that we are engaged in area plans, zoning, a master plan, and another process called logical incrementalism. And if you're not familiar with it, it's where we look at as we're building a neighborhood or anything else. Sometimes we have to wait for the next piece to fall in place, but we do see the overall overarching plan. So do you agree that long-range planning is a function of this board? Yes or no? Okay, thank you. I know you already know the answers to that. But what was most disturbing in town meeting is that a number of people in a well-orchestrated manner basically told you what your job was and that you had no interest in things like long-range planning, that you had no clue about the fact that when you got on board here and were elected and were running for election, that you 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 had no clue what the N P and E D C was, and neither did you want that clue. And that was a consistent piece, pieces of misinformation that were continually levied to this board at town meeting. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I for one took great exception and umbrage to that, to think that level of information in a well-orchestrated manner was continuously repeated, and I actually got up and challenged it. But that's not who we are, and I think that's the message that needs to take place. And even though, and I'm gonna disagree, one vote is very significant here. And when I really look at the fact that that one vote that took place was done in error, well, that would have shifted the entire burden of things. So I think there is a time when you need to speak out, and I think there is a a a time when you need to challenge it, and we are legitimately, although maybe not done frequently, it is a legitimate and solid method under which to to deal with this situation, and I think we need to. I just, I just want to give you a quote from Mahatma Gandhi, which I think is really good. And it's gonna go to being able to speak out. Silence becomes cowardice when occasion demands speaking out the whole truth and acting accordingly. I'm going to ask you to act accordingly here, speak the truth of what you've engaged in. And make something happen. So I don't know if you want something separate from me, Mister Chair, but I'm about ready to make.
Let, I'd just like to make make a comment real quick, and then you're welcome to make the motion.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I I think everyone brought up really, really good points. I I really think the the greatest issue with this is is what will happen to the institutional memory of that board. When we start, i- i- if we have nine-year term limits, it is going to take the most experienced people in planning off the board. And and that is, I mean, i- if if we have no institutional memory, then what are we doing, right? So I have a serious problem with with that part of it and with, you know, the the rest of the obvious parts that everyone has brought up, so I won't rehash that. But but really, I think the institutional memory of that board is is one of its more most important factors. That's why Jack Gardner was on there forever. That's why Nat Lowell's gonna be on there for another thirty years. It it's important, so. Abby's got her hand up real quick, and then we'll go to you for a motion, Barry.
Yeah, I promise it's quick. Do we know, I just, do we know if other towns in the state have those types of term limits, like, would would it also put us kind of out of market with everyone else in the state? Do we know that?
We're so different than every R P A, so I don't, I don't know the question answer. Maybe Leslie or or Megan do, or Barry, whoever's got it.
I reached out to the chairman of our Marpa board, and she was unaware of any other R P As with term limits. She asked the question in an email, and no one responded saying that they do have term limits. So that's information that I have.
Yeah.
There's thirteen commissions, is that right? Yeah, sorry, Abby.
No, 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 I was just saying, I mean, that then, even though Dave, I hear your point that we're very different, but I mean, that would make us even more ridiculously different in that we should probably want the knowledge, not the reverse. I I I think we.
And just one, one more quick note, and and all due respect to to John, I I respect his position. And and I think that it's important that that it's understood that we're not trying to squash it on on the island, but we but we're being very transparent about our opposition to it, a- and and I think that that's an important piece that needs to come out. So Barry, go for it, unless anyone else got something.
Oh, yes. One thing.
Yes.
If I could, just, you know, quick notes here, this is there's a lot of, a lot to unpack with all this, but one of the things, and it's coming up in our meeting, we're gonna have the joint meeting coming up. There's a lot of plans going on around here, don't you think? Think there's any planning on Nantucket? Everybody's got a plan, even people that don't know they have a plan have a plan. The Hubble Plan, which we are, we knew about, but there's a lot of planning involved in that. You have the sewer plan, you have the water company plan, you have the strategic plan with the select board. I mean, there's so much going on here. So when, when, as Barry said, when the narrative at town meeting that is not a public hearing is very hard to talk at town meeting more than one time clearly, okay, to explain something. There is, there was this, the impression if if you were just the average person in the room that, you know, planning commission is this like superpower. There's no regulatory authority with the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission, zero. As I said, what Frank Spriggs told me eighteen sixteen, whatever years ago, that the state, it's our seat with the state, this, it matters a lot more to the state than really it does to us individually. It's more about, you know, we have a lot of status with them because of the planning commission, especially being one community, the only place that has it that way except the Vineyard, but the Vineyard has a lot of members and they have a lot of power. They're like the other select board over there. Well, there's six select boards, but there's, they're like a huge power for that that island, that we don't have that here. And I think, I don't think the public knows that. And I think, you know, to make changes to this commission, it's important that the voters actually know how it even functions now before we make changes. And we're working on those changes, as I said earlier, and I think actually some of them are, I think they're somewhat similar to Hillary's article. Two of them. I mean, the land bank thing, we already know that was coming. And even the historical commission, I'm not against that, but I am against term limits, and I'm against the planning board members just being, just, you know, to vanish essentially is wrong. And of course, the vote, the elected at large brings no, that just brings confusion. You know, people pulling papers and standing at the dump for the planning commission is really something that I I'd like to see that happen. I don't believe that would ever happen. So I just think that understanding the planning commission's role is very confusing for the public. Some people think that the planning commission, in fact, somebody said it at a meeting earlier, called us the planning commission tonight. Did you, I don't know if any of you caught that.
I I I did. Peter.
And it's, it's just the way it is. It's nobody's fault. It is complicated. So and Nantucket is getting more complicated every year. So you know, Barry brought up the master plan versus the area plans. That's two, the master plan is the planning board and the area plan is the commission. I mean, they're different, and it's important to know those differences, and the institutional knowledge of 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 this board and long-lasting members of the planning commission is important to keep. That institutional knowledge is huge, as Dave brought up about Jack. People like that don't come along. Are you kidding me? The the Donnvisco's and the Jack Donnis and the Frank Spriggses are rare. And we need to keep people like that. That's it.
Hey, thanks, Nat. Joe?
Yeah, I just, yeah, it's just kind of crazy that we're kind of having this discussion, but I I thought it was really kind of important that at town meeting, you know, we weren't able to really defend ourselves or even get up, and I kind of wish there was like today, when we're talking about S D Rs and Nat brought up his question, and I'm sorry if I forget the gentleman's name right now, but he was able to go fact-check the thirty-one days, and I just wish before a vote went on that someone could say, okay, fact-check this really quickly, because I felt that it was, it was town meeting seemed like it was staged in some ways, and and we weren't able just to kind of have a rebuttal in it, and I felt that that really does a disservice to town meeting when you can't. And I felt that that really does a disservice to town meeting when you can have that back and forth. And I, I get it, if we, we were there for three days, it, three days, it, it, you know, it's not great, but it's important. It's a really important piece of, of Nantucket, and what we're gonna be doing in our long term planning, short term planning and all that. But I just find it was, you know, we said what we want to say, let's move to vote, and I understand the policy and process, but it, that I found a little frustrating and that we weren't able to just kind of clear the air or kind of, you know, um, get the, get the correct narrative out there. So that was kind of what I wanted to say. So, thank you. Sorry, Barry.
And Mister Hector?
I'll go. I really would love to comment back on all this stuff, but let's, let's get to the heart of the substance. I want to make a motion at this point that a letter be composed and sent to the select board as well as maybe the state. I don't quite know yet. Um, that addresses our concerns with Article eighty-three and its passage through town meeting. And, um, hopefully staff has enough information to be able to, uh, pull that, you, okay, good, pull that together for us. Um, that letter to be signed by the chair, and then I'll, I, I, let's get to a vote on that, and I just want to raise one other issue, please.
I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, motion made by Barry, seconded by Joe. Barry?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nat? You're, you're muted, Nat.
I, sorry.
John?
For reasons previously stated, I am abstaining.
And I'm an I. So one abstention and a yes on the rest. Um, Barry, do you have a, a, a final comment?
I, I really do, um, a- and I'm not quite sure how to work with this, so maybe Leslie, Megan, I, I could use your help just a bit here. Um, one other entity I would like to engage in the process of maybe sending a letter is the FinCon. Because they also sat through the entire process as well. And, uh, their recommendation was not to adopt Article eighty-three. So I, somehow, I, I, if we could get a letter from their chair that maybe says we did it, and this is some of the reasons why we did it, it's a little bit of an outreach, and I'm not sure how to quite get there. But do you?
Yeah. I guess my question is, 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 is what part of this is in their in their wheelhouse? I mean, I, I guess we do a lot of funding in P and EDC, so it could maybe affect that. I'm just, I, 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 there needs to be a common thread, in my opinion, I think, and, and I, I would defer to staff.
I would shout, all right?
I, I think.
Go ahead.
I think right now we should really just stick to sending a letter to the select board. Um, because the, the planning commission's request was to ask them to defer sending it to the state. So I think that the next step is if they send it to the state to then a- address your concerns there, which may be some of these same concerns, but they may be enhanced at that point, or you may have additional points that you want to make. And I think at that point, that's when you may want to reach out to other groups to get their support for your position.
So keep some powder dry for, for later.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, I like that, because I like Barry's idea, but let's just hold on.
Yep. Good, so any other questions, comments about this, this item? If not, I would a, uh, entertain a motion
to
dismiss this meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
That could. You guys, you guys don't want it to end or something?
No, no, I want to go on for another hour.
All right, uh, motion made by John, seconded by Nat. John?
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
Barry?
No.
Joe?
Of course I, for God's sake.
And I'm an I, and it's almost unanimous, and I survived my first meeting as chair.
I can't.
Congrats, Dave.
Or you guys survived my first meeting as chair.
Congrats, Dave and Joe. Or maybe the congrats go to John.
Yeah, okay, Dave, where do we really, where do we really hit the downtown pavement? Okay, you'll see how.
Uh, oh, I'm, John owes me many cocktails. All right, have a, have a great night, guys.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
See you all soon.
Thank you.
Everyone.